Three after one, so the border. Board of Equalization meeting. We didn't close out on the business. And it looks like we had one more coming in.
It wasn't an actual appeal. What it was, was it's a parcel that I found on Steve and Julie Bailey's. That had a building value of eleven thousand eight hundred and five dollars on it. That needs to be removed. And that's what I guess I needed to do, but it's still okay. It's parcel number one, two, eight, seven.
Why does it need to be removed?
Because there's no building there. That's, yeah. The building, they split it. Twenty years ago, whatever. And the building went on a new parcel. And that's where the building's at.
So it's taxed on a different parcel?
It's taxed on both parcels.
But I mean, it is taxed on the other parcel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Double taxed. Anyway, and then the other thing Carla and I talked about. I don't know if you guys ever actually made a motion or she wants one. To okay the exempt forms that we had. Because I don't think we ever really got to the whole stack of them.
What, like for the elderly?
No, for like the city, the county, the fire halls, the hospitals, the churches, the... Everything in the county that's exempt.
Golf course.
Golf course. We discussed that one. And that's what kind of made me forget because that was on the end of my stuff. And I forgot to bring up the rest of it. But anyway, I think somehow, or whatever, we needed a deal to go ahead and okay any exempt filings.
You are okay with the list of them?
Yeah, for this year and next year, some of those are going to come off. But right now, I don't, yeah. I haven't had time to get to them all, so I'll do it this year.
So pretty much all the same ones they were, pretty much?
Yep.
Need a motion for the Debbie property?
I do.
I'll make a motion and we eliminate the, one of the...
It's on parcel twelve eighty-seven.
Parcel twelve eighty-seven, I have a vote here, I make a motion to eliminate that parcel.
I'll second it. Second's been, a motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same as aye. Motion carried.
And I do have an updated land value per acre for the county that I didn't have ready during the board, but I have it ready now that I'll bring in because I didn't bring it with me. And I was going to introduce Katrina, but let me see if she'll come back.
Do you want to do a motion for the exempt form?
Right.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll wait till she gets back, then we should hear the two, I guess. I guess it's all recorded, you add a motion to exempt forms if nothing's been changed.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made to go with Rosa's exempt policy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same as aye, motion carried.
These are the land values per acre for countywide. Only extra hand, just anybody else want one?
Have they gone up or down?
There was overall maybe a one percent difference between, once you've figured it all in together, countywide. Some went up, some went down, but when you average it countywide, I think it was one percent.
Up or down?
I'm going to say up. It's been, yeah, there again, a while since we looked at that, so. Anyway, this is Katrina Gartner. And I started on Friday. Figuring out, there's lots of fun things to learn for the office. So I don't want to, yeah, I'm not trying to get her too confused right away, so try to take it easy on her.
Okay. So do you want to peel the ropes and go to school?
Yeah, well, I'm hoping she can get through two to three books, at least two books before school, if not three. Because she has to do a month at a ti- or month to do them, so. I don't know, schooling is still going to be in September, I don't know if they'll move it to July, I don't know what they'll do with it yet. Because they're only doing the basics class. So the more books she has under her belt when she goes, the easier it'll be.
Yeah.
So.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. And I don't know, yeah, I don't know if I know them all or not. I recognize them all, so. Okay. Names, no, probably not, but. And then the only other thing I asked Carla about was trying to get her a key to the office so that she can, if I'm not here at eight o'clock when she gets here or whatever, so.
I just asked Nancy to have you make one, is what we had.
Okay, because I asked about the one Debbie had. That nobody seems, not where it went, so.
Those are, I guess Tracy's keys. That she had when she was working. That's what I was going with.
How many keys are floating around throughout the office?
Nancy has, I don't know, one or two. I don't have any, and I don't think anybody, other than maybe Tracy has one from her key ring that she had previously. Those are the only ones I know of. And I don't know if there was an extra one in your office when you started or not.
No, yeah, maybe the ones I have.
Okay, okay.
I'm assuming Tony turned hers into...
Yeah, I just couldn't remember if there was any extra ones left on the desk. I think we took everything, that's where I got the extra key that I gave to Nancy. Nancy could have one made for you, I'm sure down at progress store.
Okay. Anyway, so that's what I have for you.
Looking capable in pink, ladies?
Oh, yeah, like I said, wasn't that good? We never, we kind of called each other last night to make it set up.
Well, see, uh... So you don't really know how many of those keys are floating around?
I don't know how many Nancy has. I had one in my office and I gave it back to her. And as far as I know, Tracy had the one that she had previously. And those are the only ones that I know of, maybe Nancy has more, I have to ask her.
Probably get that one back from Tracy, probably. She probably doesn't need it to be for that office.
I don't know. So I guess we can adjourn now? Yeah, yeah, let's... Go to the regular board of equalization.
A motion.
I'd make a motion, did you? Is there a second? I'll second it. Second's been made. I have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same as aye, motion carried. Now we'll reconvene as a regular board. Time to reconvene is eleven after the hour. You need a motion, you need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make it, so.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion's been made, seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same as aye, motion carried. April the minutes, April seventh, regular meeting, and April fourteenth, meeting at the Board of Equalization regular meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting. Is there a second? Excellent. Motion's been made, and second?
I have, I have some questions with that.
Okay. Yeah, board discussion. It said that, I believe it said that Judge Schumpf was running for state senate. He's actually, I think, running for the house.
Oh, okay, that was...
Another question I had was the, in the bills, there was a sixty dollar charge from the auditor's office to Jenny, Jennifer Jones for wages.
I had her come and sit in my office one day when we had the meeting. Because at that point in time, I had a lot of calls coming in on the election. And a lot of the, oh, there's something else, I don't recall now what, but I did have her come and sit in, just to answer the phone. So it wasn't such a distraction. And I will probably do that again. I have Carla right now listening to my phone because she's been having a quiet time. But at that point in time, they were busy over there with taxes and licenses. And so that's why that came up.
I just question if it's necessary, there's two of you here already.
Um, I guess that's debatable. I guess it's easier to have both of us taking minutes and...
I guess if it's in the budget, I don't have a problem with it.
It is, yeah, it is.
Otherwise, we're making that issue. And then you see that Amanda signed the minutes?
She wrote them.
Was she at the meeting? Was she at the meeting?
I guess when I go, she was, isn't she? Maybe not.
They go downstairs in the courtroom, then the deal, she was up here. I believe.
That's probably who. She was watching it on through the ice cream.
Yeah.
And I took notes and she wrote the minutes from my notes. But from now on, I'll find them if I take the minutes. She is the one who...
I questioned the audio on your deal anyway. Oh, no, most nobody could understand anything that was said that day, so. I, I mean, it's what it is. We want approval of the correction to the man's, Steve thought of. Right. I made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same as aye.
I second.
Guess it'd be time to see what a new attorney looks like. Well, I didn't, I didn't make a motion to approve the other minutes.
April fourteenth?
April fourteenth. I just did the... Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, oh, yeah, the April fourteenth. For the equalization. I read them, I didn't see any mistakes, Steve. I'll make a motion to approve the April fourteenth minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same as aye. Oh, you get to do this whole story.
I'm Bobby Sload, and I'm a member of the library board, and I'm here to introduce you to Sarah Van Dusseldorf, who is, has been considered and hired as the new librarian. And maybe we could start with, with you, Mike, since Mike is our representative from the commission to, and maybe you can introduce your members.
Okay, I'm Mike Davis.
This is Sarah.
I met you downstairs, Sarah. And this is Steve Clemens. Nicholas Const. Gary Snook. Tom Radby is our chairperson right now. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Looking for great things from you, you know?
Well, I expect nothing less from myself as well.
Well, good.
I take this job very seriously, representing Hocking County and our community.
Yeah, and I've heard great things about your background, so I think you'll do a wonderful job there, so.
Very much.
We're really happy to have you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, because we do want to keep that library open as much as we can, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So.
With your, you shared with me that all your background work up and running, I mean, like, yeah, but what capabilities you brought in?
So I actually have a degree in my school for accounting and technology. I have taught for a number of years my own children. I have a son that's in high school up here and a son that's also a sixth grader. So nine years of teaching my children. I have an older daughter also, who is away at college, home now because of everything. I've worked in the public school system, in their business office, doing administrative work, but also in the elementary, working with young students and teaching, also implementing a new computer system for the entire elementary school, working alongside of all the teachers, helping them with any technical issues that they may have, along with doing intensified reading and math tutoring for the students of that county and that district that I worked for. I also had my own business for a number of years where I did in-home care for senior citizens. And that was private, all referral-based clientele for that. So, and I've also worked alongside other small businesses to help them outreach into the community, to look over their business plan and where are they setting and what can we do to make improvements, and event planning, et cetera, for them to help build their business.
Great.
We were happy to get her.
Yeah, we did.
She's a good addition to the, to the community and, and we're so happy to have her.
Thank you, Bobby.
If you're done, would you take that pen and sign your name?
Absolutely.
Tell my wife your last name and she'll correct me a little bit.
Well, it gets mispronounced often, but I never care. It's Van Dusseldorf.
Oh, and I said Dusel too.
It's okay.
Okay.
So, I'm never offended, so.
Okay, so she never points it out, obviously?
No, I don't.
They can mispronounce that one, but when it's only five, you know, five characters and they mispronounce it, then it's bad, you know, like mine.
Like Mike? People have trouble with Mike?
Yeah. No, it's actually Michael, see?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you two here helping them. I'm gonna leave a note downstairs for you, because I thought of something else.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
All right.
Nice to meet you, thanks.
And Sharon?
Time to have you onboard.
I'm on the elderly client coming in too. So if there's anything that I need to specifically be there for, I noted the auditor, put, and I am on the agenda.
Supply budget is going to be over, I didn't know if you had other things. Your overall budget is okay, but if you set for supply...
Go ahead and tell the commission that.
Yeah, and I kind of explained a little bit, the supply budget. We just paid the April expenses, so it's a four month, and so it is going to be over, the overall budget's fine. But I just didn't know if you had a bunch of other stuff that might affect the whole budget. I tried to keep track of them and help, you know, to let people know. It isn't a major problem, I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Well, I mean, if you put it on the agenda, I'll go ahead and address it. For one thing, I would be leaving tomorrow for the three-day state's attorney training in Deadwood. That's, usually we spend approximately five hundred dollars on that. That's all going to be available. I have had, with COVID nineteen, an unprecedented level of printing, briefing. I've had four trials. I've had to replace a printer. My original printer, mine, in my office, is eight years old plus, that I bought from Kersteds, who bought from Gate Holleston. I've replaced Holly's, which we do more of the printing on that. All of the defense files, we have had to print off everything and send along with jump drives. All of those are expenses that I've had to submit. So, yep, office expenses have been more, but they're also less in certainly travel areas and things like that. So if my budget is not overdrawn in other areas, unfortunately with COVID nineteen...
Well, that's why, that can be cause, like, I don't know about state sometimes, like the election budget, because so much extra stuff is having to be done, love, math, that type of thing. The state will reimburse the election budget for some of that. And I don't know, we could look in and see if some of that...
I think you should.
Yeah. And that's the other thing, when we figure the budget or when we have, you know, kind of, when you turn it in, we kind of go back and take an average. I didn't know your printer for that old, so it ended up...
I mean, no one is concerned with my printer.
That's why I was asking, because I didn't know if you had other things that might be coming up that needed to fix, replace, whatever, so. And that's why, yeah, not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see if we can find maybe some of that. And I know you have had a lot more court cases and stuff been in the past too. That makes a big difference. Thank you. Thank you.
She asked if, if we didn't have anything else she could leave, I don't know what's any reason. I don't have anything for her. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
It's nice seeing you though.
Thanks.
Little Fred sitting here? Want a little Fred, Carl?
Yeah.
Kids, oh, I don't know, just kind of checking, see if you guys got anything, however. We were kind of having discussions about twenty-four seven.
I liked your little letter that you put out on that, explaining, yes, no, that was very nice, and then...
So we did increase the price to ten dollars, but at a time, every time someone comes in tests. However, we have suspended twenty-four seven, and I'm just calling them in random times to bring them in. It's good for us. However, it's fourth of July for a lot of these guys that are out there, so we are making forty people arrest these days. Important part about counties, the jails having a hard time taking our people, and we haven't pushed the issue much. If we really need to get somebody there for, for a strict felony, then we go ahead and take them, however. I've got some that, you know, they got three or four felonies just because they can't stay out of the bill. So it's saving us money in the long run, however, wasn't having some issues with COVID right now. We probably have four or five, and then we're making a lot of arrests anyways, so.
So what are they doing, just turning them?
Loose, there's a questionnaire, we have to capture, we have, you know, and, and they're pretty picky about who they allow in. I could get people in there perhaps if they have, but they're asking us to, you know, and most people are locals, so we're giving them PR bonds, we know they're going to show up to court. The only problem is, they're not taking it serious. Not, some of them are, but not all of them. So is, you know, in the long run, that's why it costs the county some money, but right now, we're...
So we're wanting to prosecute them?
Yeah, wanting them off my books, just get them done.
Do you have like the evidence for prosecuting them?
Sure. Couldn't arrest them if they weren't guilty, at least my... So we're good to go.
Okay.
A little update on pipeline, I don't know if PAs know, you probably do, but they are here working on the work camp. There's some other stuff going on, the spur that they got over Cottonwood, they've been working on there. We're probably looking at bike coming in, county probably by the end of the month. So, I've had three calls from pipeline, looky-loos people that are taking pictures, we haven't any problems yet. But we'll see where it goes. If you haven't been up to the jail yet, we got evidence, evidence locker that Hopefield's built for us, but we also have internal lockers in there as well that we put in there over the last month. So we're almost where we need to be right now.
Do you have any idea where they're going to start? When they first start laying pipe, is it going to be here?
Well, originally, it was going to be all at once. And there was problems with contractors, of course, you know, that's a pretty big project. I don't know where they're trying to get these contracts from, every place, you know, I mean, there's only so much equipment to go around. And then they picked out Freeport County. It was going to be starting up in northwest Florida's way down. I don't know where they are right now.
Last I heard, they're going to do the first... Here is the Bora.
Yep. Yeah, we got, we got the biggest horizontal drill that they're going to have to do, they're going, you know, up there in Bridger Creek, they figure it's probably going to take about four months, and that's going to just be stationary. I guess the one that really bothers me in this whole thing is going to be the one over Midland, it's right up against road, right against river tracks. It's a bad location, but, you know, we'll get through that as well.
Got all private ground around Midland?
Well, it's private ground, but they ask to go underneath the road. So, you know, of course, public road going there. My, my thing is, they're going to be stationary for probably six weeks on that location alone.
But they're not going to be able to bore anything under any waterways?
Not at this point. So the infrastructure, they can still work.
That's when they do bore again. Like the one with China, they start back so far, probably private.
Yeah, well, those places are going to be good, and where's going to come out over Midland, perfect spot. It's going to be underneath river and right in the middle of somebody's... But where they're going to set up their horizontal drill right there, I could throw a rock and hit it, I'm really kind of... Pre-parking right along the road too.
Where it comes out on the east side too.
Yeah, maybe we won't have any problems, you know, we'll, we'll try to keep on the best we can, but, you know, of course, our resources for them are there too, so. Depending what happens, we'll see what happens, we're ready to go as best we can for right now, we'll just see where it goes from there, so.
Just got to play it by ear.
There you go.
Play along with it.
I heard my commissioners, be a driver for me.
About your help?
Deb?
Yeah.
Deb's doing really good. She's been coming up the last couple of weeks, and she's, you know, she's got things kind of squared away the way she likes it. I can't find enough work for her to do right now, but she's picking it up, she's got, she's got... I mean, that's all just hands on, it's going to take time to get there, and she got there pretty well, she... Nonsense with the sheriff's office now, so it's going well. I'm happy with her.
She's got it the way she likes it, but can you get into it?
Well, she has her stuff, I got my stuff, so, all mine's on my computer, she's got stuff on her... Well, I'm not going to tell you. But no, it's probably nicer to go into it a little slower than trying to go all at once and try to... I got stuff that she can do that I have to teach her, just kind of pay cut to the point that, you know, sit down with some of that stuff. So she, I couldn't be happier. She, she's going to be good.
Good.
And she's ready to work, in fact, she's probably spending a little more time with me than she is with Tracy, and, you know, she's looking for it all the time. So right now, she probably sitting up there scrubbing floors, I don't know.
That doesn't hurt either.
That doesn't hurt. It's going to take a job away from you.
Would you mind becoming, like, what you were talking about earlier with your, that they built for you?
Jail cells, yeah, absolutely, come on, and it's all, you know, we took, we took that big heavy door that was on the front, the entrance door. We actually, you know, we, we built, you know where that mesh wire was, that wall? We actually put the entrance right there, and we took that heavy door and put it on there. So that door will be locked just like the front entrance, so there's, there is two locks on, on the door, so you can't get into anything there. But you can walk into that area. We don't have it locked up right at the moment, but when we start getting stuff up there, we probably will. But yeah, come on, just stop in, take a look. You know, and, and they're done with walls, they're done with ceilings, so things look good.
If Tom doesn't keep us too long, maybe we will make an up look at it.
Absolutely, come on up. Anything for you guys?
Sounds good. Like I say, I liked your letter that you put out for the people, so.
Some rumbling on that side though. What do you mean going ten miles? Eight cities, but you know, what do you...
That was this one? Yeah.
All right, guys. Thanks, Fred.
Yeah.
Thanks, Fred. This morning, I was down in, in, she was, I don't know, she was mom, screaming, mom, and then whatever, you notice the mud? I got her out of her phone, and I called the studio, said Carla has it. When does he start? Has he already started?
Last Friday.
Last Friday, me first, yeah.
And Nancy's going to stay on first?
Until they... Done.
Seven, three, seven, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six.
Actually, the twenty-ninth, yeah.
Twenty-ninth, yeah. I'd brought it up to her about, and you know, you have your conversation about locking the doors so they don't get in a snap, too. So I think she was on board to lock at five, or if she's calm or something, she'd contact you.
Yep, yep.
She said everybody up here is good, just contact somebody so they don't...
Yeah, and she come and asked me about the meeting today, and I told her I'd take care of them tonight because in case the meeting runs after five, then it's up to me to lock it.
So what do you still think, considering when I plan to get here, just having one door? Of being able to do one?
That's up to you guys and Fred, I guess, how...
It's all right with me, because he's, he's thought if we're going to get, if we had too much trouble, we'd remove the Melitta counter down there too, right?
Right?
I think he plans on moving it down.
Yeah, that's what my understanding.
Train everybody that comes in.
Yeah.
Right, which we'll address it when things get to moving. Did you ask them if they got the mower deck and stuff put on the tractor yet?
I did not. There was.
It's getting tall again.
Yeah, Nancy told me about a week ago that they were supposed to come and put it on, but I don't know that they have yet.
Snow Tuesday, Thursday night.
They do big.
That snow blower won't work when it's that wet.
No.
Getting tall and last time it was tall like that, it took.
It's hard to mow.
Almost eight hours to mow it.
Takes a long time to mow it.
Took a long time to gather it up.
To pick up loads.
Yeah.
Grass things last time.
I know, yeah. Yeah, I remember that. Legislator Vought has asked that we have you sign our payroll time entries every month and so. Page.
Is it in here?
No, I have one copy.
Yep.
To be signed.
Really. For even really knowing what we're.
All it gives hours and overtime hours for the highway.
But doesn't give like vacation time spent or sick leave. Where some of that would be kind of.
We try to break it out, but our system doesn't tell you. I think the entry.
But it's not, doesn't, I mean, you're assigning something, it says they're getting paid, but.
Get closer.
It doesn't really give out details for us to be all along with you.
No. For like, it gives overtime, okay?
It does overtime, yeah.
And then anything below, like this is either sick leave or vacation leave. And it doesn't tell you what it is. This is overtime and then we enter the leave time later.
Right.
After, so then it's separated, but yeah, it doesn't give you what it is. I wish it did because it would be a lot better.
Now, the library actually doesn't open till nine. The library's a 30 hour.
Now, when we do payroll, legislature Vought has asked me to have it signed by the cases. And they're telling the others, the first entry is the regular hours and then it will be overtime hours. And then the last entry will be the sick leave or vacation leave or holiday leave, holiday leave that they have taken. There's no other way to break it down, so you can tell what, what is.
What I was told is by signing that, you're taking responsibility for her math. She makes mistakes, you're the one responsible because you signed it.
I could ask Rod about it. If you don't want to sign it, you don't have to.
I'm not going to.
I mean, I just, I just don't feel like it's anything that's really lets you know exactly what vacation time, sick leave.
See the sick leave deals yet, seen the time sheets? You haven't seen any of that. And then I'm not going to do the votes.
Provide it if you want, if you want it. It's up to you.
Right, no, yeah, we, I mean, I'm sure we can all look at it, I just. I mean, I guess when we approve warrants, we're proving everything already, so I don't know what.
That'd be the question, why aren't we approving warrants? Actual condom, our insurance, that's a policy.
And if you want to see time sheets, we can provide them.
I think that would be, that would be sufficient, you think, by signing off on the warrants?
Right.
Well, the, okay, the, if you, I can bring the payroll warrants in. They aren't in with the irregular ones. They're separate enough, there's a listing of those. If you want them, I'll go get them and you can look at them. Right?
So, this would be kind of like similar what the city does with all their bills. They put it on a sheet like that and that's what they approve instead of.
Only this is just the payroll rather than the warrants.
Right. But theirs, they do all.
Yeah, yeah. But if you want to see the whole payroll, I can, we'll get the folder and you can look at it.
I thought we were going about it right instead of just being alone, but am I correct?
Could speed things up quite a bit if the guy had it all printed out like the city does, but.
And there's list, that's what your verified claims is in there is the list of everything that's paid out.
But I guess that's.
Just like this. Yeah.
Yep. And that's what they approve, like, like the city does, just they just look at this and everybody, if they have any questions, they can. We all see every voucher that way. So, maybe that would be a thing to do to speed things up a little bit anyway. I don't know.
Up to you guys.
Just just have one of these and then everybody sign that one.
Yeah, and approve them this way versus going through each one. But we have caught mistakes, too, in the past because we've looked through them, too, so.
Absolutely.
The thing is, is there you have the original, like on any of the warrants.
Right. And you're double checking the numbers and that's why we caught mistakes.
Yeah, that's why I say if you want to see the original time sheets and stuff, I'll go get the folder, you can go through them, too. Up to you.
I like the way we do it now.
If you don't feel comfortable signing it, I'll tell Rod that you don't.
Well, we already do sign it because we do on the warrants. We do approve them.
But see the, the payroll is.
They're just on.
No, they're not on the warrant, that's what I'm saying. This is a listing of the wages, like that is a listing of your warrant. But if you want to see the original time sheet, we can do that. Up to you guys.
But doesn't it sit there and go through, through them all and double check the figures? Yeah.
Got enough account for it.
Yeah, question him on it a little bit because it doesn't really make a lot of sense because like I say, we're just signing that we looked at that piece of paper, basically, is all we'd be doing.
This is the librarian? Did we, did we approve her?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
Do we have to do that?
Oh.
I didn't think so.
Um.
Like I didn't think so.
Yeah, I don't know that you have to.
Talk about her while she's like, she's not sitting here.
I didn't know if you wanted to approve their choice or if you're okay with their choice like that, that's up.
Hundred percent it's up to them.
Right.
Okay.
I agree. Right, where are we at, boss?
Want to do something before the 45 minutes or?
Well, you can go down the list.
Okay.
For your resolution.
Okay, number two, non-resilience, 2020 dash three. Change language, definitely first word in order. Librarian, looking at step 3, comp time extension. Beginning step 3. Where the president, CEO also, occasionally works.
Okay, I think they've each got a copy of it.
Still digging it. Probably somewhere else. It must be on my file.
Is that also Carla in our March meeting or whatever, April meeting? We went through this again and signed this, changed it, and that was not in the minutes.
It wasn't signed and it was supposed to be presented for signature in the April meeting and I did miss it. And that's why I have it on again now.
Okay.
No, it, it made the change, you did make the change. We typed it up. We were going to present it to you for review at April and for whatever reason, I just missed it. And so, that's why I bought it back.
I thought we did it in April.
No, it was not on the.
Okay.
I think it was on the agenda, but I did miss getting it out to you and so that's why I wanted to revisit it, so.
Okay.
Um. There, I don't know, there was no, um, beginning wage set for the, uh, like the librarian. I guess for the permanent part-time people, if I want to say it, that have a schedule, that they come in every week, so many hours. They have a set wage, but no, I don't know if you want to start them at that wage and then they stay at that way or if you want to have a step wage.
Usually the part-timers, we don't have step wages on those, do we?
Not the part-time temporary people that you hire, you know, to come in to help. Like when I helped or had Jennifer come in.
Right.
Sitting my office. That's, no, then you. It's $15 an hour.
That's right.
Yeah.
I guess that's why I would leave it. I mean, just the $15 an hour, I mean, it's step wages.
For the permanent part-time people, start them at 15, leave them at 15?
That's what I think, I mean, it's.
That was what I was understanding, but I didn't.
Or what you guys, that's just what my opinion is.
Yeah.
That'd be like the extension secretary.
Yep.
From the part-time.
Uh, the WIC secretary and librarian.
There's, uh.
Sorry, it's me.
This is a lady in the back. Is she in the same boat, too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Those three officers are the ones that are considered permanent part-time because they have set hours that they come in. Because when Sarah started, she asked me what her wage would be and I had 15 an hour. I didn't know.
Does, we don't change part-timers very often, so it's kind of a new thing. Do you need a motion for that, then?
Probably.
The secretary for the sheriff's office, is she getting $17 an hour for that?
But now she is because that was my understanding that the full-time people got the 17.
Right.
The part-time not 15.
That's true.
Full-time secretary would get 17 in any other office?
If they were full-time.
Where does it say that?
Well, deputies are the ones that work underneath.
A deputy.
Right.
Right, not a secretary. So, you're going to pay one secretary $17 an hour and you're going to pay the rest of them 15?
She's a full-time person.
She's a full, yeah.
She's a half-time secretary.
She's a full-time person, though. And that was the way it was set up when we put her into that position.
Well, I don't remember anything that we had said about her.
There was a lot said about her.
No.
Yes, it was.
Anyway.
Anyway, I'm not, go ahead, go ahead. I'll second it. You made the motion, didn't you?
Do you want to have any discussion on that?
What are you motioning?
I didn't motion that, I was, is there any more discussion? I mean.
We're talking about 15. Is that what, what are we changing there, I guess?
This would be for like the deputy or the half-deputy, the secretary up in the sheriff's office. Debbie, where we moved her upstairs is what we're talking about. If she gets paid $17 an hour or $15 an hour for being in the sheriff's department.
Are you setting a precedence? It's the only position, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the only position that's split between two offices, right? So, it's kind of, it's kind of uncharted territory in a way.
Well, it's, she's a full-time person where all the rest of them are part-time people. You're still not a deputy. You want to go and set a session on this?
No, I don't think you have to. Absolutely not.
As an executive, that's what was discussed there and you were here with that lawyer.
Why, you're not supposed to mention that, set an executive session either.
That's right, that's why I say if you want to, do it.
My opinion is we've moved everybody around and stuff in this courthouse trying to make things work. With, I'm part of it. Uh, in the past, the deputy or the clerk, however, was never an issue. The last hundred years, we're trying to make things work out.
She wasn't a deputy in there either.
She shouldn't be docked because, because she was here three or five years before. I, I think this is getting to be way more of a personal issue than it is a.
Me, too.
Is, uh, what it should be, but I guess, I mean, Debbie's secretary, her, her name's been run through the mud as far as I'm concerned on this whole everything, which has all been unnecessary. I mean, this, I'm not going to cut her wages because I don't feel she's been the issue. So, that's where I stand.
I don't know, I don't think we're setting a precedence either way because she's the only one that's in this position. But I would say she's the only one split. Now, I don't know, I don't know what's right or wrong.
Are you guys splitting just because you're talking about it? 50/50 wages down the middle, no matter what she works in one office versus the other?
I think that's how it's been done. Where's your wage due? I think it's split half and half.
That's the way it's always been done because sometimes.
Or you have a problem with the misappropriation of funds between the two previous offices.
Which only was thought by certain people.
Right, because certain times of the year, that office is a little busier. It was just always split as half and half, so the budget was set out that way. It wasn't by the hour, it was more or less, sometimes that office had it more, that office had it more depending on the year. It wasn't, so it was like. It's a lot easier to keep track of it that way, but I mean, they're there, they're doing their time, doing their job. They're here the 40 hours a week. I mean, that's how we justified how we did it.
I asked Fred that question about the sharing time and he was good, said she worked more up there. I was going to ask Tracy, but Tracy's out today. And, but he, uh, Debbie claimed she was fine. When her run comes in, goes other way. I was in favor of the $15 an hour up there until it got brought to my attention by our executive and I, I kind of think that, uh, I am not so in favor of the 15, but paying the secretary more, that, that gripes on me. But I'm not voting, so that's just too simple.
Maybe.
Yeah, we run into that once in a while.
Lately, quite a bit.
And if I understand, is it stay or what's it do?
I think it goes to the auditor and thought, is that true?
I have no idea.
Not positive on that.
I don't know, Robert's rule is good enough to say.
I do know it's far setting precedents that of splitting the office. It's always been, and granted, it was between the registeredees and the director's office, but it's always been split 50/50 and it's always been the same wage for both as a, as a full-time employee. Yeah, as a full-time employee.
And okay, so like right now, he's using her more up there, so how are you going to, I mean.
No, you don't.
You split that $15 an hour up there, you know, but then on the other hand, you got the 17 on the other side?
Yeah.
And she is still here doing her job and still working her 40 hours.
Yeah.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the secretary of $17 an hour for the part-time job. That's full-time, part-time job in sheriff's department.
I'll second it.
Well, motion's been made and seconded. All the papers say aye. Well, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Can I have a little, after roll call vote on this, 'cause I can't.
Okay.
Separate.
Alright.
Wait till she gets done here with the motion and second.
You're talking about going seventeen both to rights?
Right.
I think I'm gonna vote no, because I just.
Okay.
I'm gonna vote no.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Okay, we vote yeah.
'Cause I think it is a secondary position, and I don't think we're setting a precedent, so I think we, I don't think it's fair to the other secretaries, I think we do, so I'd rather.
Okay.
We split it.
Well, with I, with what I elaborated on, and I had changed my mind to wanting the fifteen, I'd vote in favor of it.
You vote in which way?
To keep it.
Seventeen or fifteen?
Seventeen.
Okay.
And it's not that I wanna pay a clerk a secretary.
We've been paying clerks for years, or you guys have.
You should want a secretary.
Well, you guys have been doing it, so.
And after the librarian, start at fifteen?
Get it behind.
Need a motion?
Probably.
Motion to pay this librarian fifteen dollars an hour, starting with.
Okay.
Third second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second for fifteen dollars, on library, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion here.
Okay, Val had a question, I thought she was going to be here, but, and maybe we wanna wait, um. She has the one individual that hasn't gotten the CDL, and she wondered to know if he should be bumped up, because he's gone past his probation period for the first three months, um, she didn't think it was clear in the resolution, I said I would bring it up, and I'll let you visit with her about it.
So he hasn't got his certification?
I don't believe he's gotten it as yet, because they've been shut down right now, and that's what her concern was, the data shutdown, not doing any of the testing, I don't believe, so.
The driving part of it, probably.
Probably, I think he could take.
The written part.
The written, but not, you'll have to ask her, I don't know that he's taken either one.
'Cause I think he can take the written right here.
Perfect, I'll get that one.
Yeah.
On your question. They're talking about the resolution, I think they had some questions on the CDL part of it.
Do you have a copy?
Oh, I have a whole packet here for you, actually. But you can look at my copy, if I could have it back.
Sure, it's a.
It's over there.
This, right here?
Okay.
Has the individual on the CDL taken his written part of it yet?
No, and he can't, because of the virus, they're not gonna, he can't take the written part until after May thirtieth, and then, and then we have to line it up with a guy from Aberdeen to do the driving part, and that's when he's, when he'll be available.
So is the driver's license placed in here?
They just called down to pier.
For the written part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I went to Rapid, went to mine.
For your regular license?
For my CDL.
CDL, like, you mean?
For my written part, yeah, for my written part, you just go, went to Rapid, and then I got my, that, and then I had to set up a schedule for my driving part later.
Yeah, well.
I thought you could still do the written, but maybe if this COVID stuff, you can't.
He, he called down there, and Jerry did, and he said that, I don't know, he called, I don't know where he called, but I, I know they wanna go to pier to do it, and because that's just what they've been doing, it's just going, but.
Well, it's a lot easier to drive down there, for one.
Yeah. So, anyway, um.
Carter, where's that at, on the paper?
It's done under the resolution.
Under which?
Number two resolution, amended resolution.
Okay.
Highway Department, the CDL probationary wage.
Yep.
Okay, so, so I know it's, you know, assumed that on, um, it's fifteen dollars, unless you, you know, you would start at uh.
Six.
Without a CDL, fifteen dollars, or maybe sixteen dollars, if they have a CDL.
Yep.
When hired, or if it's obtained within the first three months of employment, and will continue until the six-month probation is complete, for the second three months, then, it goes on to say for the second three months, sixteen and seventeen fifty thereafter, so. So it's contradicting itself there, because if you're assuming that that's what you're talking about in the one paragraph there, those lines, then yeah, you would think that, but then it goes on to say for the second three months, sixteen dollars and seventeen fifty thereafter, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, actually, it shouldn't say deputies, it should say employees, in the second paragraph.
No, the, up on the, on the, at the beginning of, right up here, starting range for a highway worker.
Yeah. Full-time deputies.
Yeah, including them back in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that should be employee, not deputy.
Yep.
And, okay.
Here it is, I see.
Now, to me, though, also, when you go up here and look at the Deputy DOE, will be hired at fifteen dollars an hour, if non-certified, and sixteen if already certified, well, it seems like the CDL driver's getting penalized, you know, and, I mean, it's, there's certification to get a CDL, but yet up here, um. They still get the sixteen dollars an hour.
The way I read it is, they start out at fifteen dollars an hour, but if they, if they come in, they're already certified, they start at sixteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, okay, and then they, okay, then they don't have that step between, there's what I mean, between that and the seventeen dollars.
No, you just got the sixteen.
Right.
Yeah, you go from there to there, so it's kinda like, to me, it's kinda the same thing, because you're asking them to be certified as a DOE, or you have a CDL, but, so to me, it's not consistently clear.
Well, what's the time, what's the time period that we give them for getting a CDL?
Well, it was six months.
That's the only difference.
It's three months.
But it, but it's, three months on here, but it was, see Dwight wanted him to get it in three months, but that's not enough time.
Right.
Certain times of the year, because if you hire somebody, say, summertime, it's very hard to get away and get that done, you know, and get it lined up.
We can't use them as a truck or anything, either.
No, but you can use them, you know, do another.
Right, but the, the whole issue of this stuff, getting stuff done, is because a few years ago, it was six years before somebody got cert, even got their CDL, which, that's why it's like this.
Exactly, if you, you know, if you wanna.
And, and the way I read it is, you start at fifteen dollars an hour for the first three months, if you get your CDL, you go to the sixteen, if you don't, you know, until you get your CDL, you don't get sixteen dollars an hour, and then after six months, that's when your probation is up, and then you go up to the seventeen fifty.
But then it says for the second three months, sixteen dollars, and then seventeen fifty thereafter, so it's not really specifying what, you know, in that last line there, before it says, a CDL must be obtained within the first three months of employment.
I think it's assuming that you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna get the CDL.
Yeah, you're assuming.
Right, but if you, but if you don't, we're not gonna fire you, is what I, the read is, so it gives you another three months to get it, and, and until you get your CDL, you don't get the step-up raise.
Right, like, okay, so kinda, what, because he can't get his CDL because of this virus thing, and then.
Right.
And, 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 and I know it's an exception, but there's always exceptions, there can be exceptions, and so, because you're depending on someone else to come.
And, and I agree on that exception thing, but this, this happened before this COVID nineteen.
Yes.
So that's where the exception goes away, because it wasn't done at the three months, like it was supposed to have been done, then the month after, well, then the, you know, then it, just, another stuff.
Yes, but I also think three months is kind of pushing when you hire, it's.
Over the winter time, I mean, it was.
Well, yeah, but what if he wasn't hired in the winter time?
He was.
So, why didn't he?
We might have this problem with the next employee.
And it would be a different circumstance, just like you said, the circumstances changed, this would have been a perfect time for him to have three months to have got it, I mean, because of the November, December, January, I mean, he could have got those, you know, and now, it's past that three months, now there's other issues in, in his way to get it, which should have been already done. Where do you reward that when it should have been done, I mean, to me?
Did he make an effort or not?
Uh, he's, he says he's ready to take his driving, not his driving, but his.
No, I knew that in the first three months.
Oh, yeah, but he's been studying, and, and, and he's been dri, see, that's another thing, because it was winter time, Jerry didn't wanna put him in a truck till the weather was better, to go out and do some practicing around, you know, so you're familiar with the truck and so forth.
Every time we've gone off of our handbook or off of these rules, it's bit us in the butt, and I'm not doing it no more.
No, but.
Circumstances.
I'm not asking, I, it needs to be clearer in the resolution. Well, I think you're discriminating against him, when you, and you're not, because you're asking DOE to be certified to get her raise, a DOE, a deputy.
I think you're talking about apples and oranges, I feel like.
I, I feel like you're asking, you're putting a stipulation on something that they're required to do for their job. I kinda feel like it's a little bit of discrimination anyway.
So she's gotta go a whole year at fifteen dollars an hour? The DOE.
Till she's certified?
Till she gets certified, so what's the difference?
So, so, okay, then why, why is it uh?
She's not certified, so she has to stay at fifteen until she gets certified.
If already certified, then she goes to sixteen, she's gotta get certified first.
But then it says, after six-month probation, seventeen.
That's if she's certified.
But it doesn't, it doesn't really.
She can't. Yes, it does, it's common.
It's gonna take her a year to get certified.
It says, if already certified, after six-month probation, that's what.
But, everybody's on a six-month probationary period, so.
But she doesn't, yeah, but if we hired, see, it's just like, if we hired with the CDL, you'd start at sixteen dollars an hour, right?
Yes.
Okay, if we hired a DOE with certification, she would start at sixteen dollars an hour, and after her probation period, she would go to seventeen, same thing.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but you're, it's not real clear in here, that's why when, when, because we went three months at fifteen, and then, at that three-month period, you know, if you're, you go, you get another step up, the swistl.
If you're certified.
What'd you just say?
If you got a CDL.
If you got.
Stay at fifteen.
You gotta see.
It never used to have to be with your CDL, you just went three months up, you go.
It's been that way ever since I came.
Because, there was that, there was that three-month period, and then the six-month period.
You're saying they got the sixteen dollars for three months, whether they got their CDL or not?
Used to.
They used to get their, their step raise for three months, whether they.
Yeah, they got the step raise, in other words, you know, it cuts out that step raise.
Yeah.
If, if you assume it the way it's wrote, except for that it says for the second three months, sixteen and seventeen fifty thereafter.
And the DOE's different a little bit, because they, they have a year to get certified, they don't have it done in six months.
Yeah, it's just, three months, I think is, maybe they need a, some, sometimes a little bit more than that.
Well.
I guess, I guess they'd be willing to give you more time to get it.
They've got all, he doesn't get a raise until he gets it. Well, that's the way it's stated, that's the way it stayed there, that you're fifteen dollars an hour till you get your CDL.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Then you're fifteen dollars an hour till you get certified as a DOE.
Well, I'm just saying that it's gonna be, you know, that's fine if that's how you wanna bid. It's just kinda.
If you're gonna get, if you're gonna get a dollar an hour raise and not have to get a CDL, where's your, where is your insinuation, incentive to get a? Get your CDL, because you're gonna get that dollar hour raise anyway, without it, that's what we're trying to do, is get them to get it, because then they're more useful to us.
I understand that, so it's.
Do you need to vote on it, or what?
I'm not sure where it's at now, I think there's been enough discussion over it. Do you need a motion on whether, what we do, whether we leave it or don't?
I suppose so, there's some record of it, so if we look back.
Don't need a motion unless you're gonna change it. On the resolution, we need one on the resolution, but that's unless, or else, change that other one, but if we're not gonna change it, then we need a motion on the resolution as it stands.
Yeah, if he's gonna change it.
Change now?
Or add, cover it more clear.
We could visit with Jerry about this later on in that day, and make a decision then, if you want to, about the highway worker. If you want to wait for him.
So you wanna change the policy on that, highway worker, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, if you, no, I'm not saying I wanna do anything at this moment, but if you wanna wait and visit Jerry about it, we can.
Well, I think it's really set up quite fair here.
I do too.
Well, so, I mean, what do you need to talk to Jerry about? I mean, we're, we're the ones that set the policies, and this, you know, and, and like, say, where's your incentive to get your CDL if you get a dollar an hour raise?
I know, that's, that's the reason to have it, I think that's the reason to, I, I agree on that.
And it's, and it's not like we're hiring somebody new right now that can't go get a CDL, it's like, this guy had time, that's what I'm assuming from the conversation here, that he's been here since November.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so he's had the, had three months before.
But there might be, you know, you maybe should talk to Jerry, because there could be more than I know about, you know, the reason why he hasn't, you know, besides the fact that he can't go do the driving part of it, why he didn't get the written part done.
Is he bleeding?
Why don't we just leave it the way it is now, and discuss it later, if you want to?
So you're not gonna approve the resolution, or you're gonna approve the resolution and then change it for next year?
No. No. Are you talking, are we talking about this just for the, the guy's already made a motion about, about the director, the deputy, right?
Right, but we still have to approve this resolution.
Yeah, we haven't approved this one yet.
You gotta approve this whole resolution, Gary.
I should wait and see if the three months is long enough. Gary thinks it is.
I started in September ninety-eight and I had it in November. When I worked.
But maybe not everybody has your truck.
No, no, and that's the first time I ever drove a truck too.
That's part of the conditions of being hired for the job to begin with.
Yep.
So that they do.
Right, and if you have the higher intellect and can get it sooner, you get that dollar sooner.
I can talk to Jerry.
Okay, so we're not gonna approve the resolution until Jerry gets here? Where you at? All right.
I'm gonna kill us to wait.
Is Jerry coming?
Yes, I just opened what came.
If you're gonna table it, I'll make a motion to table it till later.
Table through second. Motion second to table it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
We were gonna see if it was all right to put this in the paper. Because of the virus, some people are uncomfortable coming clear into the courthouse, so if they call, we can meet them in the foyer downstairs, set up a privacy booth for them to vote down there. If they don't wanna come up to the office where there's closer quarters. And we're gonna have you read it and you'll see what you thought. If it's all right. It looks like this. I did finally get ballots today, I think. I haven't had time to open them.
I read it.
Yeah, I'm happy. So we can go ahead and let people know.
Have to look to the paper. Look okay?
I guess a nice. Clear enough that people understand.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to accept that.
I'll second it. Put it in the paper.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, the next question I have is, do you want to move the date of the June meeting? Because the second Tuesday falls on election day.
So you're supposed to do something at one forty-five?
At one forty-five, I believe. Oh, he didn't show up. I was waiting for, Thor was gonna come in to do the resolution if you had any questions for him. He chose the time, so I guess maybe it maybe slipped his mind or he was running.
Just wait and see if he shows up.
That's up to you.
Nothing on the Newman property yet?
No, I haven't received anything from them.
They look like they were up there cleaning up the other day. I've seen a couple pickups there.
Two pickups been there for a couple of weeks now and I haven't seen anybody moving around there, but.
Do the opt-out?
What about moving the meeting? Is there any discussion on that?
The Thursday? Is that what you want?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that'd be fine with me unless you guys would rather do Wednesday. It's up to you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We do four?
Second. Uh, the motion, the second was to move our monthly meeting from second to the fourth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, um, yeah, now they opt out. It all has to be completed before July fifteenth if you decide you want to do so. It has to be published within ten days of the decision. Twice. With at least five days between publications, so if you wanna think it over some more, we couldn't do it in June, but would have to be decided on in the June meeting. Whether you wanna do it, how much you wanna ask for, all the details.
What would you have done now?
There's a opt-out booklet in your packets, I believe. Useful information on the process and dates and stuff.
So we have to do a next meeting and then get the vote on it in July, so it has the publications instead?
Well, we have to have everything set so I could publish it in June because it has to be completed down by July fifteenth. Everything, publications and, yeah.
Thor can come at three. He couldn't leave until three.
Oh, okay, thank you. We just wondered what happened.
And they can do a written CDL test tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I thought where everything's taking a hit, you know, dropping our opt-out. But that'd kind of be good faith with the pipeline coming. I'd be apprehensive about not doing this. I don't know what the pipeline's gonna bring, but we've already spent some money, you know, prior to.
And you don't know what's gonna happen then. There's gonna be extra costs associated with the pipeline, you know, with the sheriff's department or, you know.
Well, we still need to take some look at some, like the Robb's Flat Building needs some work done on it out there. We really need to look at doing something at Milesville sometime down the road here too. We're just, that one's been just the can getting kicked down the road for a long time.
I'm definitely in favor of trying to do something in Milesville. But I, I mean, as the good faith part goes, I think cut it in half. I mean, this is tough for everybody this year with all the circumstances and stuff. I mean, we, when we got this opt-out started, you know, we didn't have a lot of tire tax, a lot of extra little things that we weren't, weren't getting money for before. That I, I think it would be good to cut it in half, in my opinion. I mean, the burden on the taxpayers.
Does it come to the amount? The opt-out is? I mean, do you know what the, I know it was sixty-six. The sixty-six thousand I know was the figure. I don't know what it is now. That, and that's been like years. The wheel tax. Yeah, I think, yeah.
It stayed about the same.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. I have to look and see what it brings in. Don't remember.
Then there was some other money too that come in that was, uh, not bridge, but they changed. To where you could use it for everything instead of just certain things. That was like two hundred thousand, wasn't it?
That was what I was, you were gonna ask if there was any restrictions on that. The swap money, what used to be the swap money.
Right, it's not that now, but yeah.
Restrictions on it anymore, it all goes to the highway. Yeah, it does go to the highway, but. That's why I mean it.
But you still have to save that for your bridge, you would.
Yeah. We can't buy a motorator with it or. I think you can now.
There was some of that.
That was the question.
Some of that, what was that? That we used it for buying gravel and stuff though? It was some of that.
We, well, we did get some FEMA money from two thousand fifteen.
Right, it wasn't that.
And they, well. Yeah, the former swap money is now called STP. Yeah. And that is, that's for your, that's basically running the highway department for about most anything that. I, I'd need some clarification from before I'd be comfortable.
Crushing gravel is where I think that money should go towards it. I hate to see you not be able to crush as much or more than what you are now. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. We do, yeah. Keep in mind that we have bridges that need to be replaced.
That mile, yeah.
And they only.
What are we coming in at the Midland Bridge? Have we got any estimates back on that?
To fix it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like almost a million dollars, nine hundred and fifty.
And what, would FEMA gonna cover any of that? Not yet.
They are. We just don't know how much. Yet.
And when they're gonna give?
It's still in the planning stages.
I mean, I, I don't have any doubt that we could spend as much money as we have, ever. I mean, we could have a billion dollars, maybe. But I think during ti- hard times for everybody, I think it'd be in good faith and showing a little bit of, okay, well, okay, you guys are cutting back too this year. Well, let's try to kinda, and, and maybe next year we'll have to go back and ask for more or something. I mean, but we're doing what we need to, not versus.
What you can, if you can add, set the opt-out for whatever, like the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's, I'm not saying we have to set it for, I'm just saying that I don't think we can totally abolish it.
And I, so I said half, that's why I said half, yep.
Yeah, well, what is.
And I understand that. Everything is for everybody, cattle price, everything else right now.
You can set it for the two hundred and fifty thousand if that's what you choose, and then when you make your request, request less. It doesn't have to be that.
And it doesn't have to. I, I mean, I know that, I'm the same way when I got, I'm doing bills. Well, I can make that amount of payment. I have a hard time paying that full amount of that I set up.
You can't go the other way though, right, Jerry? You can't set it in half and then ask for more later.
In two years you can, you can have a separate.
In three years, you can change, yeah. Yeah, you can cut it down now and three years when it's up for renewal, you can change it again, yeah.
Right, for renewal, but in two years if we need another, or say we don't have enough, we can opt out again during the election, is that right? Not for, not on the same opt-out, it'd be a separate opt-out.
Maybe.
I think, I think we do that, but I'm not dead positive, but.
We can check on that.
Cause I think that would show the taxpayer, we're here really trying to do what we can.
The only thing I have a problem with is all that money goes to your highway department.
That's what, it was to.
You're gonna cut, is the highway.
Right, that's, that's what it was all designed for, is because we just. We don't have enough revenue to, you know, to cover our costs, so.
By, by cutting it, you're actually cutting the highway department.
Right, and also, which is when we did this opt-out, fuel prices. And even the taxed money was, our taxed fuel is three, it's a dollar, I mean.
But, but okay, on that aspect too, you.
To crush you mean?
Right. So.
Right, so where did that two hundred, we should have.
That's what I mean, it's where.
That's where the good faith thing is coming in. It's like, we're not putting up that much. I mean, if, if, okay. That opt-out should go straight to gravel, period.
It should.
And nothing else.
But then again, last. But then again, last year, you know.
You need buildings to put your equipment in.
But that's what everybody says, that's what we want it for, is for gravel, but we're not using it for just gravel. I mean, we're not. I mean, just.
We have to pay to have the gravel.
Isn't it? Right, but we get paid back. It, it all comes down, it's.
If they ever get to it.
Yeah.
It's been three, three years since they.
If it was for, wasn't for FEMA ten years ago, we wouldn't have had anything.
I had to not go around with that FEMA girl out there. Somebody else would have it just.
Yeah. FEMA's a wonderful team, but. But it takes a long time to get your money back.
It's worse than that.
I agree. And who knows when that money will show up? Cause last time it took five.
I guess I would leave it where it is then if you think that, like Carla said, you can take. You can't change, go the other way. You know, if you decide to let down the road, you don't wanna take it.
Is there any more discretion? Take it until next month? Come back with their, I have to go with for the. Are we doing a motion or not?
I think you just wanna table it, probably.
You have to finalize your resolution in first of July.
It says an opt-out should not be done until after January first or after the year prior to the year taxes are payable, but must be done on or before July fifteenth of the year. Prior to the year taxes are payable, so.
Almost like have a special meeting in July and then to finalize it.
The June meeting.
We gotta do the June meeting.
Time to get it published, published.
June meeting is when we gotta have our decisions made.
All right. Want to table it in a month?
Yeah, the time train's correct. Probably tabled.
But you gotta table it, you need a motion.
Your second?
My second?
Motion's been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
Number seven, Gail Newman property, I have not received any paperwork from her for what I need.
Sounds a duty to, oh, Gail?
Yeah. Number seven, request to approve the WIC contract for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. I sent it to you and you read it.
That, you talked up the food chain and it kinda sounded all right.
Mm-hmm. Same.
Yeah. They're pre-usual. I'll make a motion to approve the big contract for two thousand twenty-one. Second?
Yes.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Think you wanted me to come in tomorrow to sign that, didn't you?
Yeah, please. I'm the electronics engineer.
Then when I learn how to do that, then I'm gonna, you know, try and find my, I delete it. I'll make a motion to approve the returning the city reimbursement to the, to sheriff's budget.
Okay.
Motion's been made to reimburse the sheriff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. We tell on us, all in favor, some to the farm wine license vehicles. Is that different than what we did at the.
Is that different than what we did at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, these are the malt beverage ones. And the beginning of the year or December, that's when they come do is, um, the liquor, actual liquor licenses. These are for the beer sales. They split them for whatever reason.
So this is. An extension of that?
No, they're separate licenses.
Ones to sell, I'll call it, that are established, the other ones to sell it so they could take it off the establishment.
Oh, this is. Okay, yeah, yep, 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 on and on.
Well.
Right.
One is for.
I knew, we, I thought we did the on, so this would basically be for off sale.
Right.
Not exactly. The liquor on off sale. Is the one you did in December, this is for the malt beverage.
So this is the beer.
Yeah, that's, this is the beer, the other is whiskey, there you go, that's how they say it.
So back in the day, T thirty-four was called Sea Ridge, I was around, whatever age I was. Just got a, heard liquor license there, so, boy, you did us a favor, you cracked open a half pint of white port, we tried that. It's just curious.
Try to get, I'll make a motion to.
Okay, I need one for. T thirty-four and one for Lake Wager.
Yep.
Okay, I'll second it.
For.
Which one are we doing?
Both of them.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Motion's been made in second for. On off sale, malt beverage for. Lake Wager Golf Club in T thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried.
Okay, now for the, um. Gulf Rowdy Arena, three day license. Was in yesterday. This, the license he filled out originally, he wanted, was for the malt beverage. He wants to add liquor to that, to sell at the bronc ride. Um, I did talk to the state and they said that they can, you can approve it if you so choose, you can also charge him for it. To do that. Um, it's up to you.
Liquor plus the.
I'm sorry, Carla, you said he wants to do beer and liquor?
Yes, yes, that was a good question, he came in yesterday to talk a lot of it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And it's just for the three day.
Three days, yeah, it's just the three days that will be.
I'm sure it's there already.
Just in the trunk.
Right? I guess I don't have a problem adding that to it.
Is that a?
Motion, I still move.
I'll say, I'll say.
Motion to make in second to. On and off, sale liquor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
Did you wanna charge him? I don't think it's ever been a charge before, but.
For the three day thing, bring some happiness and.
Yeah.
They, we used to have that one out, Love Mall Corner, the Rowdy on the fourth of July, all the time, and. It got to where I couldn't even get anybody that wanted to do the concession stand, let alone. One year. Block kills catering, so I got. He said. Dollars. And I said, well, I think they can do that, or do that, and anyway, he come and set up and served lunch is all he had, you know, pop and lunch. I went by there about. Two o'clock. How we were doing, and he said, we're good. He'd already made that we're a thousand bucks profit by two o'clock in the afternoon, and he didn't even sell beer. But you just couldn't get anybody to do it, the Lions used to do it, and then they quit, and Forge Kids tried it, and they quit. Here.
Tom, you sign these tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, with the, with contract?
By the time we wrap up, whoever, then you can. You, you have enough to do today.
Okay, we'll just put them with the, with contract.
And I missed you, so I'll talk to them down tomorrow. Here now, then I'll let him do it. Uh. Request approval to update S B federal property agency list.
Who do they wanna add, who do they wanna take off?
Um, I wanted to add Rose Azadi Aweek, and I noticed that, uh, Mike. Or Mark Nelson is still on it, they only send me a list every.
Yeah.
Other year, and so sometimes it doesn't get caught. So, I just need a motion to take him off.
I'll make a motion.
Your second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor, request. Say aye. All the same time. I'd be down with Jerry. Or.
There's a second page.
Uh, oh.
There's a second page, yeah, yeah, don't like that.
Yeah. They're just, um.
Shit.
We've got grants from. Uh, for the library, any extension service, and for the emergency management. Um, I need a motion in second to automatic supplement them. Um. Fifteen hundred for.
To approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion's carried.
Okay, now I need a motion in a second to approve an automatic supplement to my expense account that I pay. The grants out of, that we got from South Dakota Foundation. Because it, that money will have to be paid out to the Badman, Bad Rivers Sportsman's Club. Uh, Milesville Community Club, and the Masonic Cemetery, it's on your agenda, I believe, the amounts. Um, this is legislative audit, new thing, they want you to. Supplement the expense account and supplement the revenue account both, so.
Do you do this every year?
Every time we get grants. Everybody applies for grant, if they receive it, then we have to account for it somewhere in the system.
I'll make a motion. Your second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all the same favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion carried.
Okay, and then this is basically the same thing, just. Supplementing the revenue account for both the grants, the TC Energy one, which was six thousand dollars total, and the South Dakota Community Foundation. Was seven thousand three hundred and eighteen, so the total supplement would be thirteen thousand three eighteen.
Still move.
Second.
Yes.
Motion's been made with second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Um. Last fall when we, I don't know where to start, how to explain this, last fall when we went to a legislative audit workshop, they stressed that the counties really. Should be charging sales tax. If they sell anything, um, surplus property or, or even making copies. So, I did contact the state and I did get a sales tax license, and, um. One of the things that, how it came up is Rose has the. Um, county directories, and she has had some requests. To purchase some, I think from out of state people, she said most of the local people, she just gives them to, but the out of state. People she does sell them to, she said she did over in Jackson County also, and I did contact Vicki. And she said, yes, they have a sales tax license and they charge sales tax for that. And so I just wanted you to know that we will be. Acquiring a sales tax license, and then you, like, if we surplus property, we have to turn sales tax on it too. It's six and a half percent. Um, I think for, like, the highway department, for your outside of city limits, it would be four and a half percent, but I'll have to double check on that. So, we'll have to start doing that.
Like when we sell the bridge planks and stuff like that?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
Sales tax be more than the bridge plank? Hmm? Sales tax be higher than the bridge plank?
Also, there's a letter in your packet on the county LEPC membership roster, it's the same thing that you get, I think, every year, early two years. Uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee is what LEPC stands for. And the commissioners, uh, emergency manage. Emergency manager, and. State attorney and the sheriff, I believe, are the people that are on it, it's, list them in your letter there.
So you don't need any of this, you just.
I just wanted you to be aware that. You are on the planning committee. Um, the library has a. An adding machine, is that what you said, yeah. Um, that they would like to surplus, as it does not work.
Should slowly sleepy sales tax.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so your gravel crushing is covered under your sales tax?
That's a good.
Four and a half, huh?
Question, I'm not sure.
What's that?
Well. If the county did. Did do someone else and got a payment. We don't have to pay the sales tax, we have to collect it if we sell anything or do anything. Does that make sense?
Cause we sell a service.
Yeah, if you sell a service, then you have to collect the sales. But, if we pay for the service, we don't have to pay the sales tax, or do the next sales tax.
God, you're right. Do you need any motion on the request to surplus?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second to surplus the adding machine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried.
I live in the war, I'm done. I think, and the, finish the revolution. And, my, one more thing, my, uh. Flat for sure.
All right, he'll be here in three.
Mm-hmm, he's definitely.
This is Jerry's hot seat, huh?
Slide up here. I'm gonna say thank you. Said by a pretty good looking girl there.
Hello there.
That was all I knew.
Sarah's our new librarian here. Jerry's our highway superintendent.
Right here, look at that. No, picture that, look at it.
Tom didn't.
Couldn't, couldn't say it, that's what it is. Must be from the same country.
I pronounce it Van Dusseldorf, but I don't really care, you can say it.
How's that? Yeah.
Well. Jerry? Well, we wanna start off with. The employee. What was his custom?
Resolution?
Well, with, uh, yeah, the. Well, thought the type of thing. Anyway, uh, he didn't, uh. Complete his C D L training. And, uh, and he had three months prior to this. Going to college, goes with you.
Well. Jerry's examining all of my photos.
Did you say he could do it tomorrow? What'd she say?
She said. She didn't have the chicken, she didn't even fucking have them there.
And got it for tomorrow, I think.
That's what she could manage said tomorrow afternoon, child. The written part, I mean.
Yeah, I was calling down there.
Gotta go, hire a chief.
You just get a department, so. For a C D L, that's true, so.
But don't, don't you think three months is long enough to get one, if you, that's part of the job application is. Yeah.
It wasn't for three months.
Yeah, but I mean, don't, don't you think normally that three months is long enough?
Well, that's the problem.
But that was the question.
And that's hard for us, cause every time we go off of this, these rules, it seems like it comes back and bites us the butt, and everybody else is like, well, that's the way it is. And I'm getting kinda tired of being the. Good guy and then the bad guy later.
I guess our, our discussion before you got here was whether or not to give him, wasn't to give him a, a raise.
Step raise.
A step raise, since he hasn't been at C D L yet. And, and, and our manual, our manual says that you. You're not supposed to get the step raise until you get the C D L, so I don't want.
So you read on down there, you can't get full pay. Until you got it. In six months, right? Hello, deputy, I want to do something.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we.
No, that isn't what it says.
It is written.
I did read it, we've read it, read it, read it. It says the deputy will be hired at fifteen dollars an hour if non-certified. And sixteen if certified. Okay? After six months probation, they'll go to seventeen. That's if, that's if they have their certification. Otherwise, they stay at fifteen, till they get their certification.
And they have to do it within a year.
And if they don't do it within a year, then they're done.
But this is. Final reject there.
We're giving the D O E longer to get it, but it takes longer to get it, to get certified, if you're not certified, it takes. A lot longer to get certi- to get their certification, than it does a C D L.
And they don't get any.
They give them a year to get certified.
Pay raise either till they get it.
Really kind of applesauce. This is so much longer.
It's a lot more, it's a lot more of a process, you know, to get certified.
If you want. She said that she could actually get certified within a short period of time, but through the state. They don't actually certify you for a year, but she actually is certified within. Whatever time it takes you to get your. You know, just like if you got your C D L within a month. You know, you'd be certified as a C D L driver.
Right.
So it'd go to the sixteen dollars an hour, and then after the six months, it'd go to the seventeen fifty or whatever.
Yeah, if they, if they, as soon as he gets his C D L, he'd go to sixteen.
Right.
I mean, that's only gotta be, I mean, if he was hired with the C D L, he'd be sixteen.
Up here, it says after six months probation, they get seventeen dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carlos said if you pass the test tomorrow, he can take the driving test in two days, otherwise. Before the COVID nineteen, it's got to be sure you take the driving test, but now because of that, you take it within two days.
Then here, it says you're getting seventeen thereafter, down here, you got him getting seventeen fifty.
Oh, that's mispronounced.
Yeah, it's just, this is just not.
Uh, that one.
It needs to be clarified so that we know exactly.
This is, this is the. That's for the.
Deputies.
Deputies.
Okay.
Right.
That doesn't include everybody, no. Okay.
It's just temporary.
So I guess if he could take his written and pass that, I, I wouldn't have a problem going to the sixteen. You know, even if he don't get his driving right away because of that.
Right, if it's tomorrow, and then in two days, he can take his test, well, then he gets it done, it wouldn't matter.
Right. So yes, if we can go ahead and do that.
So shouldn't we have that in the resolution, though?
No, because he's actually passing his test.
Right.
What if something comes up and he can't do it, the driving part of it?
Well, he doesn't get it till he gets the driving part.
The, the one from, say, my end too, though, what if he isn't able to pass the test? You know, that's unknown yet, because he hasn't taken it. You know, I don't know if this is difficult that well, I don't know how hard it is.
I don't even know where the individual is offhand, so.
I'll tell you how this all came about.
So that's not a personal issue at all?
I'll tell you how this came about. As long as I've worked for the county, after three months of probationary period, you go a step raise. Okay, so at that one meeting, I said, he should, he's eligible for his three month prob- Well, then it was told to me then at that time that he has to have a CDL, which I didn't have a clue that he needed a CDL to go to that three month, to get that three month step raise. I was never informed of that. So then I'm like, okay, well, then you explained it. So then I go back and I read the resolution, and the resolution is not clear to me. So I just want a clear reser, resolution, you know? So, because then after the, and then, and then the six months, you do get another raise. It's, for six months, you're on probation. Three months, you get a step raise, six months, you get a step, a raise. That's how it is with all the other offices. And I thought, you know, if we're gonna be fair about things.
It isn't how all the other offices are.
It isn't?
No, the DOE does not get a raise till they get certified. And that might be a year.
Years ago, you're right, that, we, we did let it slide, we didn't, people get a CDL, we just kinda let it go. But we, what was it, a year ago, Nick, when we changed it to where we, they have to have a CDL? Been a year, it's been at least a year ago, I think.
From every handbook, from day one, as far as I know, you had to have your CDL.
Within six months.
Right. And I know in the past, there's six years between having CDL and working for us driving trucks. So I mean, there's a lot of, we're trying to follow the book or by the rules, a little bit.
No, I don't have a problem with that. That's not what I'm, you know, what, what the issue is. It's the resolution. I, so you're cutting out, in other words, you're cutting out a three step, step, the three month step probationary wa, wage from the highway department.
Not if they get their CDL.
Right.
If they get their CDL, they get their step raise, you know?
But yet, the DOE, like at the DOE, every other office, even Carla's office, at three months, they get a raise. I think it's, I think you're just discriminating against the highway department. That's my issue. If, if we are gonna have it.
The only thing is different is if you just drive a truck, you need a CDL. And in these offices, you don't need to have a CDL.
And you don't need to do a job. Fifteen dollars an hour straight across, so we're not discriminating against these other offices.
It's just an insanity of basically to get a CDL, is all it is, you know? And you should have one just by law, really, you know?
It's part of the job requirement.
Right.
And it's not our fault either, that it's not done.
And he's not gonna lose his job, I think, over this. It's not like he's, it's not the trouble over it, it's just.
No.
It's all slide, it will be viewed outside of, if you want to alter it in the resolution, you know, if you get it here, then you get it driving done.
Yeah, if you get it done, it's all, it's not gonna change.
Can't keep up on that virus too, you know, everything's shut down. My memory is, I've been, I've shut down before this with some other people, I've gone around. And it's gonna be here, compact people, it's gonna be here, next year, next year. I ain't gonna run that long. If I get it out, which I don't hope, but I'll weather die.
But if he gets it this week, it won't be a big issue. He should be able to, sounds like?
No, it isn't, but we just need this, don't we think we need a resolution? So should we have something in the handbook, something?
There's something in the handbook, I'm, I didn't bring mine today either.
What's it?
I have Mike still looking in there.
I just know that we've bent the rules and bent resolutions and, in the past, and I don't wanna do it no more.
And that is why you have a superintendent or supervisor, they have to wish them to...
This, uh, this base.
Benefit.
I was thinking it should be under like applications or something. That's in section four.
I'm willing to stand this, because of this COVID-19, I don't have a problem. It's just that I don't know whether he should, we should bend the rules about the ways, I don't know. Start doing that, it's... Road raising, pulling shoulders going.
You need phone calls? Liar. You got one, didn't you? Talk about it later. No, the one, airport area. I, I got a phone call too.
What's the Quinn Road like? I'll help him. It, it was bleated the other day, we went up it. I swear, it was horrible. I heard it was horrible. Um, it wasn't too bad.
Oh, yeah, I went out, I got a phone call saying it was so bad, couldn't stay on the road, couldn't drive.
On Quinn Road?
No, different one. And I, I went out there the next day, and it was, it was just road maintenance.
They were bleeding mine yesterday, it was raining, I thought. It just moved it last night.
That's right, if it would've went past the rain too much, you'd have been mad.
I see they didn't try to do caries.
Oh, I think that one needs a little gravel, doesn't it? I've heard it's terrible.
The rain actually helps for pulling shoulders, it doesn't actually help kinda, after you get it up on top, huh?
Jump and do thors.
I tried to beat it down right here.
What's that?
I said we should jump and do thors. I thought, I went this morning.
Jump and do thors?
You were blading when I threw this one.
Yeah, jump and get it done while they're reading. He probably doesn't have nothing else better to do, so. Oh, boy. You can watch this later on TV.
Great.
If you bring an ID, so we can verify who you are.
Yes.
I think there's a copy of the plat.
Oh, yeah, I can see that.
That's what we got.
Yeah. You can look at it too, if you want.
On the south side of Buckle's, there is another property line. Where's the, the containment area? Is, is down the center, that is another property line. And then on the north side of the lagoon, is another property line. It's about twenty-five acres, twenty-four percent acres. Anyway, I'm gonna develop it a little bit, I'm gonna put a building up and do some things that, that don't have anything to do with the sailbar or the feedlot. And, uh, housing? No, not housing. But, uh, anyway, I'm gonna develop it a little bit, and like I said, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with the sailbar itself, so I wanna be able to, uh, separate up the liabilities and, and, uh, be able to, to have everything in order. Shouldn't, we, we have had, I think we've got a platter, so we can lay it out in front of there, but, uh...
I thought I seen it, but I don't think I ever saw mine.
Maybe I do. If not, I have it.
Yeah, I do have it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, two. Dozens of them here in my file.
This is track B and track D two? Is what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yep, exactly. The, the north edge of that is, uh, is right along between Buckle's and I, where all these grain bins are. That road, as it curves around, goes to the approach. And, uh, we set it up down the very center of that road, so that, and there's the ten foot access even on either side of this, so that, that, I mean, this property has access through that approach, no matter what. And then, of course, on the, on the east side is the county road. And on the south side is, uh, it's right on the berm of the, of the lagoon. Just off the berm of the lagoon, and you're trying to, trying to separate, you know, all the, all the parts of the sailbar that are within the containment area. And this part, none of it's in the containment area, which is useful. Yep, exactly. Plan on developing more, more than north, you know, the south is that low, low lying kinda gravelly area. Down, down low there with water cable kinda comes up, so anyway, that's not as, as usable. But the north, the north side of that's really useful.
See, kinda flattening it out and stuff now?
Yep, yep, kinda building up, so we got good drainage and, anyway, at some point, there will be building towards there as well. Yep, it's good for the town, it's good access.
Then they trunk it back, no?
Hold to get out.
Starting with front eight.
Can I try?
Sure.
Do you want the sheriff guys to read ahead?
Yep.
I just took my red one and once, um, I just didn't read it.
Yeah.
I've got a bunch of pictures here.
It's easy to not, not see if you're not looking at the plaits and following it out through to...
Right.
I found a mistake on one, one, two, or one, also at one.
But you don't, that pays guys money. I wanted to be right.
Right?
I'll, I'll fit out a pier to Thymon, Th, Thymon, or Thielam.
Thielam.
Yeah.
So you ready for a motion then, or, or raise? Alright, so move.
Your second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second has been approved, plotting for Thor. Home, favors, say aye?
Aye.
All the same signs? Motion period.
Good job, you guys. We're back to the important business.
I'll look at the easy one.
Yeah.
If you were to find Tracy, I needed to get.
Okay, well, she catches. Perfect, perfect.
Quite a process for plotting something out, isn't it?
It is.
Unbelievable.
I had no idea what it all came down to. That's quite a thing. This was the easiest part, thank you.
Right, perfect.
If you had any other questions, call me.
Alright, thanks, Thor.
Oh, do I have to?
And you have to take it to Tracy, Doc.
See, that was the one.
Yep, I got you.
I have a copy of that, and I'm finding them to be tomorrow.
That, that, great. Call me when you're ready, I'll come down and pick them up.
And you want this? Okay, yes.
How'd the bowl there go?
It was good. I think they had five no sails overall.
Wow.
Uh, overall average was twenty-two hundred, almost twenty-two hundred. So, yeah, it was one of the most successful ones we've had.
Huh?
Yeah.
Quality?
Quality there, at the very end, the two hundred and forty some bowl in the ring brings sixty-two hundred bucks. Yeah, I thought that was great. Nope, it was an Angus, for sure. Is that fine now to take, or you gotta do something? I have a stamp of that, it'll be ready. Lot of signatures.
Yeah, I think they were kinda surprised with Rogers last week for that bowl to be ninety bowls in it.
Yep, nice.
Maybe the high solemn bowl or sixty some bowls, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, he was quite a waste down there, still top them.
Once you get something you like, you can't... Yeah.
So do you write with one of them? How, how deep does your name come out first?
Never.
Even the other to me. Peterson. Got my Peterson, probably, or whatever it is.
Want to take that too, or is it?
Peterson Walmart? What's that, Peterson Walmart?
Thanks, guys.
We got everyone.
I think we're in agreement, aren't we? There's nothing in the handbook. There isn't anything in the handbook.
No, I believe you. No, they didn't change as much as we thought was gonna have to change. Just, actually, a lot of, a lot of things that we've run into is just the way people read it. You know, it's more... Yes, it is frustrating, actually. Yeah, I can't figure out anything anymore. Right? Kinda like my wife, I walk away losing.
Yeah. Still feel good about it.
I had a question from, I don't know if it was one or two months ago. We got, uh, I seen, uh, somebody that went on vacation, took a sick leave for the vaca, was it vacation? Or was they sick quite a while? Uh, one of the workers.
In the highway department?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, when I go home, I'll, I'll, I still have my papers, I'll call you up personally and I'll ask you about it.
Okay.
Yeah. And might be a good explanation, but with what we do have, we're on every now and then, the old, not everything gets to the front. I got it filed in the library, but sometimes you gotta go quite a ways back.
Okay.
What if, what if we, uh, if he gets this done in the next week, let's say, can... Let's do it then. Soon as he gets, soon as he gets his CDL. Yeah.
Cause he already gets his CDL, it's...
He'll get it on him right away.
Yeah.
Right.
What do you want? Yeah, I got your corporate tin and bridge, it's good six at Midland, that's what else? Is it serviceable from the spring runoff? So it's probably alright for a while if they don't need anything.
So when we, so when they, they do fix that, Jerry, we're responsible for twenty percent, or?
I think.
Is that what it is?
It's about that.
So it could be, could be a fair amount.
Couple hundred dollars.
That's all.
Nine fifty-four.
Two shops. Hmm? Two shops.
Two shops. Big shops. One good shop. One really good shop. Let me ask you this. The way you fix it, it'll last, could last forever, the way it is right now? Or you don't know like this?
I'm on the water.
If the water keeps running like it is, we'll be fine. It didn't even come up hardly at all this year.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, but nothing.
It looked good to spring when I went down and looked at it. I think it's really high, like.
You got a roof drive, aren't you?
Yeah. He's done all the his, cities, Glen O'Connell's, everybody's.
We got a lot here and there. Get some out of there.
You should take them old tires down there and dump in there.
They don't like us stuff to. They don't like concrete in their tire gear, but like you said, once you get it in there, what are they gonna do? But tires, I think.
They might make you go get them, huh?
On that Powell Road, does it need to have some kind of a guard rail up there or anything, you think, or? Yeah, okay. Okay, cause I know it's pretty bad awakening if you went over that edge. Okay.
Yeah, when you put the concrete in there, you build it up like.
Good.
If they went up as many as a quarter feet over there.
Right.
Cool.
Lawn dirt.
Oh, that, that dancer, they're doing the dirt work out here on camp, on roads yet. I was just thinking about, throw it over the middle and that's gonna be.
To deal barely wanted.
Oh, I haven't heard about that. And I talked to that guy from Canada about that mulcher, he was hoping to get it down here too.
Looks like it's coming out good though, looks like things are.
I have, uh, keep calling. Period, you put that mulcher on.
I think the roads look pretty good, I mean, just the little maintenance, I mean.
You're not, you still use the packer too?
Probably not good.
So you could have all three.
When you just dry down it, get some moisture on it, finish.
Right.
Well, you got those clumps up in there with that grass.
Right, and they're not like getting aggressive and bringing up the whole bottom of the ditch either, they're just cleaning up the shoulders. Lot of the ones I've heard most complaints about.
Carla, do you have the two paper copies I need for that? You need another copy, I need two papers.
Oh, okay.
Do you think that? Isn't that hydraulics, you run all three at once, cause you're not running all three at once, Scotty, would you?
Your. Disc your guy the other day doing the shoulders. I come up behind him, I don't know how fast he got him going, but. Okay, he was going about ten, twelve miles an hour. That little giddy, yes, give a little bitch. Just a little scary to me. Is that the reclamer thing? Yeah.
It's, uh, just an arm disc.
Huh?
An arm disc or?
No, that little, little.
He used to run it, Nick. Joe Millie did most of the running and I think he's probably twenty-two miles an hour.
And this is, I got confirmation from DOT and from Dunkin' Brule.
Oh, yep.
We can use it just like any of our two oh one funds.
Okay.
So Carla is correct.
I, I thought so, but I couldn't remember.
But you also, that, that's the money you're supposed to be saving.
That's the money we're supposed, yeah, that's.
Right, but we have how much in there right now?
Quite a bit.
Yeah, I think there's quite a bit in there.
I wouldn't.
Jerry, if you ever get that mulcher in, let me know, like, I'd like to come and launch it, like, shock.
You know, probably. Yeah, I think so.
So.
No, there's, there's money in there, just.
But if we do it the way we opt out.
Right, and I'm not saying all of it, just, just, you know, I mean, things, the way things are, I think you would show that, you know, we said that going into it, if we didn't need it, we wouldn't. Take it all, but we've never not taken all, which, we can spend it all, I mean, that's never been an issue.
Be interesting to see it work.
Right. Right, but I bet the next two years, some of those bigger projects like that, it's gonna be just mostly taking care of the roads and stuff that's going on with this Keystone Pipeline. You know, and I mean, we got some gravel to haul and the FEMA money will be coming in, and I think the next couple of years should be, as far as. Money wise, I don't think we'll be through that.
Another thing about that, um, contaminated hydraulic system. Um, certain models or brands of blades, you gotta have the ever trouble. You know, anything to help with. So can't, you don't have to have that, but I don't know, I don't need to have. Yeah. Sure we'll be in the warranty.
Well, I have value key bug in it, so.
He said that you get it down there, but he was worried about it, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Kill him, it's not her, bro. Oh, it's in Canada?
It's in Canada.
My granddaughter is taking the shot, and she's about fed up with them too, that you leave Nebraska, you come in under quarantine. She said, I know the gravel roads, she's bothered and bust out. And they got a job at the hospital, I'm sure.
David, my cousin, he was down in Utah fishing down at Flaming Gorge. And I think that's a fourteen day, and then he come home and went to Montana, and that's a sixteen day quarantine, so he said, I'm just serving them both at one time.
Just a month. Some of them table at work out there, eleven tops, so.
Yeah.
Well, there's so much misinformation.
Take the week each week at CDL.
You don't even.
Representative told me, that you couldn't, they stopped, you couldn't even go through there.
You can go through if, if you don't stop. You're not gonna stop. Like up in Bridget, they, they've got their checkpoints right off the highway, just go, so if you turn in, then you gotta stop.
I don't know how it is with there.
There's a sign says, if you're coming this way, find an alternate route.
Yeah, I went through there the other day.
Deagle you?
Yeah, and then they stop you going both ways. They ask you where you're going and what your business is and who your passenger is and if you've been quarantined, you know, when you're staying in your home, you know. It's, it's quite a process to get through there. But I, I, probably not all bad. So.
Yeah, no kidding.
But it didn't bite us too bad.
So far.
Heard, uh, sent in on the governor's conference and going to winter, or, or east, or be. Late onset, so the people from, they kind of wanted the governor to stop it, but people from Minnesota were coming in there fishing and this. Lied, well, hell, it killed this, so it was a big deal. She said, uh. Not, wasn't gonna close it. There. Didn't alter. Her laid off, so their fish is in Imperial Chamberlain.
Stay in two or three days at a time?
And their FEMA goes, it was three weekends ago, they took their side to side.
You said that they wouldn't even allow you to go through either. You can't, you just go through a thousand questions.
I don't know, I think they were doing that. Every person, we have to stay in our shirt, not security and everything.
No matter what.
Right.
But we say that most of them would do that, but I think they would think it's ten more minutes.
Oh, sure.
So much, everybody out of it. So, so is enough people died to the, I don't know if I heard right, in New York, did they just use like a mass grave?
Yeah, yeah, on that island. They've been doing that for years.
Oh, don't even know.
They're unclaimed bodies. I guess it'd be, there's quite a few homeless.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you stand it.
Oh, God, go through. Any news down?
Yeah.
Maybe it challenges a lot of it to be on the street. Yeah. Well, do you have any more to do?
Do you wanna?
The resolution?
Yeah, the resolution. And put it on next month, again, it's for approval.
I need a senior discussion.
Jerry, um, Carla said she has the schedule for the test tomorrow at two o'clock our time in pier. And she said if you stop by, she has a list of questions that they will ask you when you go down there.
So does he just take a truck and then drive that passenger?
Yeah, only two days.
All the processes.
That was two weeks, for this deal, two years.
Sleep. So we need a motion approved out then, is that where we're at? Nice little move.
I'll second that.
Functions been made in seconds. All in favor, say aye. Hold same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Tell him.
So tell him no pressure, just pass. So we sub vouchers now?
It's actually pretty short, meaning. Doesn't seem short, but it's looking a bit tiny, quite a short.
Mm-hmm, seems really long. Somebody let me open the window?
It's hot.
Yeah.
I'm gonna switch it off. That's kinda my head of hell, that's my.
So CDL must obtain within the first three months of being appointed. Not supposed to vote song? I'd like to leave it that way.
Vote on the whole resolution, right? Whole resolution, yeah.
The whole thing, yeah.
Not just. That word. Let me say the fifth.
Yep, sinco de mayo.
Up there at Moonville area or drop the flat area? I was just. I didn't look like it quite a bit, I took four liter up there today, I go down that deep creek. Crazy.
Well, here some months ago, I kind of wanted to. Time two ways and that didn't work. So the CDL, three months. How'd you guys vote?
Well, I think the reason that those guys voted the other way was because of, they voted no on the, uh, split in the sheriff's secretary. And we already voted.
Not splitting the wages.
Yeah, splitting the wages on that. Which we already voted on at once, so that shouldn't have mattered anyway, I mean, that shouldn't had anything to do with the, the resolution.
Right, cause we voted on that separately, so that should have been.
On it separately, so.
Well, I want the CDL on three months, that's definite.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that would be for the, that would finish the whole resolution, right?
Right.
If I disagree with what the wages is.
Discussion's over.
No, it's not.
Yeah, we're voting.
Tom hasn't voted.
The discussion was already called, we're voting, that means discussion's over.
I'll just send the votes of legal.
So is that a yes?
Yes. Let's add it. You, you wouldn't let Carla slide in there, would you?
Yeah.
I think so. I just. But, we talk every day? Can't bring anything else. The welding shop looked pretty good of that road out there, I thought. Some of that stuff, kind of, just kind of worked up through it a little bit, huh, some of that chloride? So we can put it back on. You can kind of see it a little bit, but I think it might be alright where it was mixed in. Right. I went down it yesterday, I thought it looked pretty good, but I hope. You know, I don't think so, it looks like it's firmed up good and it didn't like sink in either with. We'll go with and see how it kind of goes, make sure they don't dump no more of that stuff on it. We'll go with and see how it kinda goes. Make sure they don't dump no more of that stuff on it. How's it? Oh, good. We'll find out how it holds up here pretty soon, it sounds like.
Were you talking about the hilltop drag?
I got a road to complain about it though, man.
Don't you know after you come up, Commissioner, your road doesn't get lated anymore?
Lated, I want it paved.
Holy smokes.
Are they coming in that work?
We've been trying to get our road paved for years and, uh, it was very, very interesting.
When we put that asphalt on it that one time...
I was gonna say, you had it paved, you had asphalt on your road.
You remember how well that held up for, it held up for three years, never had any issues with it, hardly any dust.
And then it all went to heck, huh?
Yeah. But when you go to clean that up and bring anything up on top, it just stays there, it doesn't ever work its way back off very well. So that asphalt's still there, it's just buried.
And then you get a...
Yeah.
Kenny... On my corner, right on that driveway of mine, and every once in a while, I'll get a... Working up out in there. Yeah, they're not gonna be happy whenever you do fix our road because it don't have any crown, so it really needs to be pulled. You know, I mean, it's... Well, I did, but it's, what little I pull it, it don't last long, it pounds back out.
I don't think we can do it if that road is a section line.
That's not section line. Section line's actually about a hundred yards south of there.
We closed that section line, cause Ronnie Coyle built the shop right on the middle of it.
That's what section line really is. It gets to be a section line over there where the dirt is, but I mean...
Three different people.
The Donny's over to, mine is that's... Or to the highway.
Remember when it's a family domestic thing, each kid gets a lawyer and each kid gets one? Thanks.
Call you.
Okay.
It's in a different month and, I don't know, the back two months or three or one. As good as I am, I build this one.
You can tell when people start working, isn't it?
Now you'll have to go back to it.
Yeah, I could, I'm gonna go home.
You work that.
Might try to do a little work on Chevy's pickup.
Thanks, Al.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al. Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for...